Good evening. I'd like to call the City of Manassas Common Council to order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) Where we start, Alderman Taylor?
Mayor, I'd like to take a moment of silence for the 41st President of the United States, George Herbert Walker Bush. Thank you.
The first item on the agenda this evening is the roll call. Could we have the roll?
Alderman Tom Grotty.
Here.
Alderman Ted Grotty.
Here.
Alderman Repella.
Here.
Alderman Nichols.
Here.
Alderman Taylor.
Here.
Alderman Sevanik.
Here.
Alderman Langdon.
Here.
Alderman Kruger.
Here. Item E is public comments on any matter of concern to the city. Is there anyone who wishes to speak this evening?
Hello. I'm Larry Konetsky. I live at 222 Lake Street in Manassas. I am the President of the Manassas Athletic Association, more commonly called Manassas Maxx. And I'm here for a number of reasons. First off, on behalf of the Maxx, I'd like to thank the city and the Park and Rec Department for all the upgrades that they've been doing out at Coslo Baseball Park and Field. You know, the Maxx baseball team and all the teams that come to play the Maxx really enjoy the field playing in it now. So, thanks to the city and the Park and Rec. Also, thanks to the Park and Rec Board for allowing the Maxx to be part of the decision-making process for making improvements on the field. Not always cities get input from other groups, so we thank you for that. And I guess mainly on behalf of the Manassas Maxx, I'd like to present a check to the City of Manassas for $1,250 for further upgrades and improvements to the dugouts out at Coslo Baseball Field. So, we look forward to continue to be part of the planning process as that ad hoc committee for Coslo Field improvements and making Coslo Field the premier venue for high school and amateur baseball teams to come and play. So, thank you and Mayor Murkis.
Thank you, Larry. We appreciate all of -- we appreciate everything.
Okay. Don't give it to the mayor.
Thank you, Larry.
Thank you.
I'm gonna borrow this microphone here for a second. I just want to thank you for all the things that you guys do for the community, too, some of the fundraisers that you hold, the sponsorship of our fireworks every year, and working with Community Fest for the things that are going on in the park. We really appreciate all your volunteer efforts, as well as the team and the others that help with those items as well. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council. Go Maxx and go Manassas. We'll work for seven in a row next year.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak this evening?
Sandra DeBille Taylor, 545 Broad Street. That was very nice. Now, I hate coming up here because now I bring the gloom and doom. First off, on the agenda, similar to what just happened, I wish the Community First Fox Cities Marathon, they're gonna be doing a presentation. I wish that was at the beginning of the agenda, you know, so that they don't have -- they're really not part of staff or department heads or consultants, and that could be ahead of time, and they wouldn't have to sit and listen to me. So, first off, on the minutes, Debbie did a fabulous job trying to keep up with all the budget hearing items and what was happening at the last meeting, but there is one line I would like deleted from my comments that says that I recommend more collaboration with the school district and the health department. In fact, I'd like it more separated. And I thought I brought that clear, but the minutes don't reflect that. Then, on your agenda, there is a resolution for borrowing, and I just want to mention this because I'm not a math whiz, and I hope someone has a calculator out there, but I'm really questioning why we would extend an existing loan and refinance it from 10 years to 15 years at an increase in the interest rate of a quarter percent on almost $4 million. So, if someone has a calculator and can calculate 0.25% interest on the $4 million over 15 years, I'd like to know how much more we're spending. I don't see any advantage why we would want to do this, other than the fact we're stretching out the payments. I mean, most of the time you refinance to reduce the interest rate, not extend it. Then, I do want to talk a little bit about the budget. It's -- I was able to watch the end of it last night on the televised council meeting, which happened last Monday. Unfortunately, there's been nothing in the paper, nothing in the social media. No one knows anything about what our budget's gonna be, and it's really unfortunate. The mayor, you know, is always posting things, and he doesn't post anything, nothing on the website, but we'll all get a propaganda letter in the mail with our bill. And spare me the letter, because it's gonna be warm fuzzies about how wonderful the city is and how we're doing all these great things. Instead, it's gonna totally whitewash the existing steam plant debt that we still have. We are tight with our stormwater utility. The steam plant and the simply incredible foods has not amounted to anything. We saw the Gilbert site that's been demolished, and there's been no development there. The Joint Review Board, we -- Manassas share were deficit of $138,000, according to the NINA budget. The RDA deficit, I think, is in excess of $300,000. Honestly, I don't know where they got the dollar to buy the R.R. Donely property. We shifted $100,000 in salary from Public Works to a TIF just for one year. I mean, there is a lot of things that have -- were not addressed, and I think primarily Alderman Stavonik for trying to reduce the levy. I think it was about $55,000 that came off the top, but like I said, I think it needed $1 million just to take a dollar off, and at this rate, we're never gonna get anywhere. The RDA funding that you want to do for the Public Works facility, and I said, I'm not opposed to that project at all, we need it, but it's just opening another line of credit. So, there's still a lot of work to do, and as a taxpayer, I'm not happy, and I can guarantee you this time next year, there's gonna be a cut, because the mayor's gonna be up for reelection, and he's gonna use that to say he reduced taxes. Then, for those of you who are not able to attend the DOT meeting regarding the Racine Street Bridge, that's another item. That's another $200,000 we're gonna be minimum. We're gonna be stuck with maintenance, because we are gonna be taking over ownership of that bridge. A few things surfaced that weren't readily known before. One of them was that the City of Manassas does not qualify for any of the enhancements. So, any of the beautification and the decorative street lighting and what the bridge is gonna look like and the high-density landscaping to try to, you know, combat some of the noise and the roundabouts and the lights is gonna be on the taxpayers, on the City of Manassas. The DOT is not gonna pay for those enhancements, like they've done for everyone else, even though this project has been on the books for years, they're not gonna pay for it. And another distressing portion...
Mrs. Taylor, we're at six and a half minutes at this point?
Pardon me?
We're at six and a half minutes, six and a half quarters minutes at this point. Do we have unanimous consent for three more minutes?
Yes. You have a second.
Okay.
Thank you. The other distressing factor is, again, Option J, which was never given to the public before the council voted on it, was the cheapest option at the time for the DOT, because it went from a three-lane concrete bridge to a two-lane bridge. Now, they're even getting rid of the prefab concrete and replacing that, the lift portion, with another metal grid. So, the noise is still gonna be there, the traction, the lack of traction factor's gonna be there, and it's gonna be coming down that bridge, it ices up and hit a roundabout. I mean, the DOT has just taken the city on a ride, and unfortunately, the council has not addressed this like the majority ran for you or ran on the platform that they were going to try to veto this, and as much as you all say it's a done deal, we still need to look at this as a regional problem with DePere and Oshkosh and the other communities that have lift bridges and bring it to the state at that level that communities our size cannot afford to maintain a bridge. It has to be, at this point, it has to be, if we're gonna get, be responsible, it has to be looked at a broader level, because no one's gonna listen to little city of Manassas. And that brings me to Racine Street, which is on, unfortunately, I would save that for the next committee meeting, but I'm not allowed to speak before the Board of Public Works. That's why I take up extra time. I thought this was already addressed when the DOT decided that they were gonna extend beyond their original plant that was going to land where the bridge landed. They've now extended out past Broad Street with the intersection and to put a median in. So, tonight, you're gonna now decide, well, what to do with Broad Street. And at this point, let's just cul-de-sac it, you know? If you want, if it's no benefit to the people who live there, who need to go to NINA, or if you're coming down Racine Street to go another roundabout to get to my house, a good inspiration is to go on Clark Street and NINA, and you can see what that waterfront street would do for you and how that would improve property values. But at the present time, Racine or Broad Street is used as a shortcut. It's people want to avoid the lights at Second Street and Third Street, and they come over the bridge, they take a right, they fly down to DePere, take a left up to Third, and they're off to Kelly McAllen.
Mrs. Taylor, we're at three and a half minutes at this point?
Okay. Well, it's, I'm not happy about any of that. I'm not happy that the DOT is allowing pedestrians to cross Racine Street, and the bikes can cross Racine Street, and Jimmy Johns can cross Racine Street, but I, living there, cannot cross Racine Street. Speaking of Jimmy Johns, Jimmy Johns and storage sheds are the only economic developments in 2018.
We're at four minutes at this point. You've had over double your time at this point.
Have a good night.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening? Stan, this wouldn't be the time for us to speak. What are, what is your comment?
Unless you want me to go up there. I attended that DOT meeting, and there are a number of issues that we need to address, so I would like for us to have this placed on the agenda for our next meeting.
It would go on the Public Works agenda, then?
It can.
Okay. Okay, moving on, we are at the Report of Department Head Staff Consultants, and we do have someone from Community First here this evening to talk about the benefits of the Community First Fox Cities Marathon and donate some money back to the city.
My name is Amanda Secor. I'm here tonight representing the Community First Fox Cities Marathon presented by Myron Construction. Thank you to the City of Manassas, your Public Works Department, and your Police Department and Safety for helping us to put on such a safe event. Our mission as an organization in the community is to inspire health, wellness, and community one step at a time. Overall, that's what our mission is, and every year, it's our responsibility and our privilege to be able to create a platform where people can go after their goals, and we do that with a variety of different events over the weekend, but certainly the Sunday events, the distance events are the ones that are most recognizable and the ones where we really get to showcase parts of the City of Manassas as the half marathoners and the full marathoners and the relay marathoners all come back through on their trek down to Riverside Park. We have been just so grateful for the support and the cooperation of the city in helping us to do that and helping people who have set goals for themselves to be able to do it very safely on that weekend with your help. One of the things that we are, as a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, is we want to make sure that what we're doing is also benefiting our community, and so we are thrilled tonight to present $1,000 contribution to the City of Manassas Police Department in honor and recognition and thanks for the work that is done to help us create that safe environment for our participants. We know that there are a lot of initiatives that the Police Department takes on in the community that may not have funding that's available, so we're hopeful that this contribution to the Police Department will help you accomplish some of the goals that you have in mind for the city and things you'd like to do for your citizens, so thank you very much.
So, Chief Steika would be honored to accept the check this evening?
You can have the big one and the real one. Thank you very much.
Okay, moving on, we have the Minutes and Communications to receive this evening. Is there a motion? Alderman Sevanik?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like for us to receive Minutes A through D and Communications E and F.
So, motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Item G is the Consent Agenda. We only have one item this evening, the Minutes from the Common Council Meeting of November 19th. Do we have a motion? Alderman Sevanik?
I'll move for the adoption of the Common Council Minutes of 11/19/2018.
There is a motion, a second, by Alderman Tom Grotty. Discussion, Alderman Taylor?
In the Minutes, last meeting, Mayor, we had two members of the public speak to the council, and at times, one person spoke about the high taxes in Manassas, and I wondered, do we go, do you go back and respond to this person and let him know why our taxes are structured, and so the person seemed kind of upset and...
I did not, I did not respond back to her, no.
Okay. You know, they came here, they're on television, and they're upset about something for them to show up here, and, you know, I think it'd be good to respond to things like that and also respond to the people watching television about, you know, what this person might have been saying or asked. We also have another person that was on the agenda that night and has questions and sometimes states that were violating state statutes, and I think we just sit here and listen to that, and I think there should be a response from your administration on behalf of the council here to answer these questions and get the council answers out of when someone from the public accuses us or indicates that maybe we're doing something that we shouldn't be doing. So, I think we should be taking the members of the public here that speak in more of a response to their questions in writing and put that in the pack, and also maybe a correction to the public, that the public has to hear this, and then the rumor mill starts out there in the community, so I think it would have been a good opportunity for us to get some answers.
Alderman Sevanik?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to offer an amendment to change to the comments that Sandra Taylor made. I think this might correct it if she thinks it sounds okay. Instead of it saying she recommended more collaboration, that maybe it'd say she had concerns about the collaboration with the Manassas Joint School District, especially on the Jefferson Park Improvement and Health Department.
Second. You'll have to help me exactly what you want to take out and what you want to put back in.
Just basically take out the words "recommended more" and put in "she had concerns about Real simple. And she shook her head out there, so she seems to be receptive to that.
Okay, so there was a second, I believe, too?
Yes.
Alderman Tom Grotty?
No, Alderman Taylor.
Alderman Taylor. Okay. So, the motion and the second were to replace the word "recommends" at the bottom of Page 1 with "had concerns about."
Collaboration, Manassas, especially on Jefferson Park.
No, we're just changing, yeah, that stuff's all still there. Okay. Just so everyone knows what we're voting on.
I have this. Do you have any?
I think we should just remove "recommends" and add "concerns about," not "more." I'm not sure if that's exactly what happened.
I do. I remember it that way. In fact, I'm telling you, when I read... I'm sorry.
I have not talked to Ms. Taylor at all. In fact, when I read these minutes, I said to myself, that's not what I thought I heard. I heard her say what I just put in the, as a record, she had concerns about it, and not necessarily that she felt that we should do more of that.
That's fine. I just, I don't remember either way, to tell you the truth, so it's, it would be at the pleasure of the council at this point. Randy, did you have something on this or...
Something else there.
Something else, okay, then we'll wait until after the amendment. So, to remove, oh, just "recommends," oh, okay, and "she had concerns about."
Add the word "about." Okay.
Otherwise, "it doesn't make sense" is a sentence. There you go. Okay, seeing no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so now the motion as amended. Alderman Repella?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I will commend Mayor Murkis. He was on WHBY talking about the taxes last week. I did hear him on the radio. He did mention about Manassas taxes going up like a half a percent. He did not mention the Kelly McCounty taxes going up, but he did mention the Manassas taxes with a very low increase. So, he did his, the political part of advertising the greatest news. He did also mention about the ShopCo and the Experience Gym situation that was going to happen, so we did, we're doing something more than just storage units, and so that's going to be fixed up a little bit. And also, on the current council, we did try to do some things with the bridge, but we were, it was five to three to try to do something, and we needed a six to two in order to do anything about the current bridge situation, so we missed it by one vote. So, we did try to do some things, so thank you. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion? Need a roll call vote for this?
On the Minutes.
Okay, so we'll have a roll call vote then, please?
As amended.
As amended, yes.
Motion carried on roll call 8-0.
Item I is action items. The first item is the accounts payable and payroll for November 21st through November 29th. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move for the approval of accounts payable and payroll for the term of November 21st through November 29th, 2018, in the amount of $680,137.30.
So, motion, a second, by Alderman Ted Grotty? Is there any discussion? Alderman Sevanik?
Well, I don't think I can ask it, because it was probably for Brian. So, anyways, can I grab that a second? James and I had the same issue, so he's gonna, I'm gonna take this one, and he's got another one, but it is for check number 63183, and usually I call these in, so I don't waste the council's time, but I don't have...
Looks like Page 15.
Yeah, I don't, on James's copy, there's no page number.
Should be, it's written.
Oh, there it is. He's got it in his scribble. But it is for the Hartford Ford LLC in Fond du Lac, I'm guessing, or I don't, where is Hartford Ford that we're purchasing a brand-new 2019 F-150 for $52,544?
It's purchased from Ewald's Hartford Ford LLC, which is on 2570 East Sumner Street in Hartford, Wisconsin. It's for a 2019 Ford F-350, new...
It should have been part of last year's Public Works...
Correct.
Is it Public Works?
Well, everything goes through the Equipment Fund.
Yeah, it's purchased through them.
Well, Equipment Appreciation Fund, I understand that, but my concern is, is why are we buying a vehicle out in Hartford when it's only an F-150?
Well, it's an F-350, but...
Oh, I'm sorry. It says F-150 on the sheet, so I can't know that it was a 350.
I know nothing about pickup trucks, but I can tell you, Ewald is the one who has the state bid in the, for the state of Wisconsin.
Gotcha.
So, there are some vehicles, I know that we've had a purchase through Ewald as well, because they hold the state bid. I would guess that would be, but it would be my guess.
And you said it was for a 350? Okay, this is wrong on here, then.
Yeah, it should have been 350.
Okay, that makes more sense. Okay, thank you.
Whatever they do, equipment purchases, they always do competitive bidding on them as well. I'm not sure if it's a state purchase, if they do that, but other things that are not in the State Equipment Fund, I know we always competitively bid. Any other questions on the counts? Alderman Taylor?
Same page, combined Page 15. It's a towing company in Manassas, check number 63186. Four vehicles towing 409 First Street.
That was the 409 First Street that was torn down. Part of that demolition, we had those, the vehicles taken off the site at the time of the demolition and all the orders, otherwise we, they would have just been stagnant and remaining on the site. That is billed to an in-and-out fund that will be, tried to be recouped through taxes as well as invoiced to the property owner.
And I wish we would have been a little more proactive on this and why the person owned the property, these cars were there for years, and now we have to tow them, and I believe we're pounding them for six... I believe we're impounding them for six months, too. Is that correct?
I believe these vehicles are being stored at the Public Works facility in the secured area, so it's, we aren't charged for that, but it, yes.
Well, let's go back, will let's go back to the bank that owns the property, or is this going back to the?
At this time, we've had conversations, but we haven't, they, they haven't finalized anything that it is, so. Right, right now, the ownership still is in that property owner's hands.
And that's, you know, that's the key here with these vehicles and storing them in packyards like this, and then all of a sudden, we get hooked with the cost, we get hooked with impounding them, and I think we could be a little more proactive, and I certainly hope we, we get the $300, that you actively go after the $300. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. On that same note, I think we had a policy that we weren't going to personally impound vehicles, so I don't know how that changed and why we now have that happening at our own location. Unless we're going to start creating a whole new situation, there needs to be a policy in place with a charge and then bill back to that company, I mean, to that property. So, hopefully, you're taking those steps, because we had that as an issue. That's why we've never impounded vehicles in this community before, that, at least that I know of since I've come back.
We could, we could certainly look into that.
Okay.
No further discussion? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call eight zero.
Item two is the beverage operators license applications for 2017 through 19. Do we have a motion this evening? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the beverage operators license applications for the 2017 through 2019 licensing period as listed under approved on the Police Department's memo dated November 28th, 2018.
There's a motion a second by Alderman Kruger. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call eight zero.
Item three is a change of agent for QuickTrip. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve the change of agent for QuickTrip number 2971499, Appleton Road, Manassia, for the 2018 through 2019 licensing year.
There's a motion a second by Alderman Kruger. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call eight zero.
Item J is heldover business. There is one item, the CGI Communications Community Video Program Agreement. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move for the Administration Committee's recommendation for the approval of CGI Communications Community Video Program Agreement.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion a second. Do we have discussion? Did you get marked?
Yes.
Okay. No discussion? Could we have a roll call vote then, please?
Motion carried on roll call six two.
Item K is ordinances and resolutions. The first item is Resolution 28. It's a borrowing resolution. Do we have a motion? Oops, I'm sorry. I was just writing down the vote from the last one.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'll move for the Resolution R2818, a resolution approving applications to the Board of Commissioners of Public Lands to borrow $3,890,000 from the State Trust Fund for the purposes of refinancing BCPL loan number 2019025, and authorizing the borrower, borrowing and issuance of certificate of indebtedness and levying a tax in connection therewith.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, motion a second by Alderman Langdon. Is there any discussion? Alderman Sevigny?
Um, yes, I was wondering if, John, if you wanted to address Sandy's, I think it's a simple answer, if you want to explain the difference in the interest.
Right. When we go out for the State Trust Fund Loan Program, as you all know, there are different interest rates for different maturities. So if you're looking at a five-year issued, you have one set of rates. If it's out to 10 years, it's another set of rates, and anything between 11 years and 20 years is another set of rates. It just happened when we went and applied for this application, I believe, City Clerk Galiazzi and myself sent the application form in back probably at, right after Memorial Day, at the beginning of summertime, before we had the CIP, the five-year CIP done, and then we knew where the final cost was coming in for the, for the new Public Works facility. So, we submitted the application in, and then we had a resolution that we had approved. And then you, remember, I brought it back a second time, because there was three extra words for capital equipment, because I forgot about the fire truck. So we got that included, and so we had approved that the second time with the same terms for a 10-year maturity with the 4.25% interest rate. Everything was fine. Then when we got through, implemented the new software and had all the departments put everything in, and for the CIP for the next five to 10 years, and then we put the new Public Works facility in there, there was just no way in to be able to get this issue for $3,890,000 paid off in 10 years. I went with 10 years originally, leaving, as we had done, the borrowing plan in previous issues, always had been 10 years. But then after we had now the full five-year CIP, and knowing that we had the Public Works facility, which was a, which is a higher priority, and then looking at all the other projects going forward, there was no way to fit this in a 10-year payment structure. So, I went back to the mayor and asked, you know, what we could do, should do, and then we decided to modify this to request a 15-year, not 20-year, but 15-year length on it. Because of us going now from a 10-year to 11- to 15-year period of time, now that bumped up the interest rate to four and a half, so went up about a quarter of a percent. However, since that time, since we had the application in here in October to do this, interest rates have already gone up again. So we caught it just in time to get this in under like the last borrowing before the new interest, interest rates are probably going to continue to climb. So we caught this quick enough, so City Clerk Galiazzi and myself got the new application in, so you had to go through the whole same process, they had to go through their committee again, and now this is the final step. So all we're doing is extending it five years, because we cannot afford payments on this structure in those last two years of 900, $800,000 and $900,000. Whereas now that we've got this stretched over 15 years, the maximum maturity in any one year is no more than $575,000 in any one year. $800,000 and $900,000 would have been very hard in those last two years of a 10-year payment structure. So it was more strategic, looking at this, we know it's going to cost us a little bit more of interest, but it, it does us well for placing now, as we go forward, each borrowing issue for future years and all future projects will be reevaluated, we'll have the USDA loan information all submitted in by the time we go through this process next year. So, this was very strategic on, would we suffer in trying to, for future years, or should we do this, bite the bullet, go ahead and extend it to 15 years, and then have all of our other capital projects structured, looking forward now that we've got everything in the pipeline and the Public Works facility, to try to do this all in tandem.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm no genie, but I also predict that next year, there's probably going to be at least two more rate hikes, so it's, it's what it is.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call eight zero.
Item N is public comments on any matter that was listed on the agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to speak?
Hi there. Sandra DeBill Taylor, 545 Broad Street. That's very unfortunate. That just leads more into the whole city budget, and as rosy as everyone wants to make it look, we're not over the hump, by any means, and there are obstacles in the way. The other thing I wanted to comment was the CGI video. I appreciate the two people who voted against it, because I think they did their homework. I don't think the rest of you did. I think you're going to be surprised by some of the feedback you may be getting from local businesses. I'll just leave it at that. And during the budget, I did mention that there was a lot of things that could have been cut. I still think there is a lot left on the table, and one of the things I mentioned was all the low-hanging fruit. And if you look at your check register tonight, so I'm talking on budget, there's over $9,000, and there is one item for cameras for the police, but the rest of it, under the credit card bill, I mean, it's lunches and meals and miles and, and it adds up, and it's over $9,000. So that little stuff adds up. And another item I was curious about, here's another one over, over $9,000 for parking structure repairs. Is that the new parking ramp having problems, or the old parking ramp?
It's the Marina Place ramp.
Pardon me?
It's the Marina Place ramp.
The Marina Place ramp? Okay. Um, so, I will cut things short. I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to speak longer before. Good night.
Seeing no one else, is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
There's a motion a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.